I'd like to call the study session, the August study session, to order and let the record reflect that all board members are present but Mr. Lee, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a special recognition tonight, Dr. Ritter?
Yes. Mr. Chotis, do you want to inter-- no, Mr. Ameling, if you would, come up, please.
Good evening, Dr. Ritter, members of the Board. Each year, the Missouri Association of Pupil Transportation Awards has an award, Driver of the Year Award. It's a nomination process throughout the state and then a pretty rigorous committee goes through everything that we submit on the individual. I could go on and on and on about the list of accomplishments that our Driver of the Year has, just a few of them, 19 years of driving a school bus accident-free, countless certifications related to safety, one of the biggest hearts you're ever going to find. And I'm not going to stand up here and talk a whole lot about her because I'm going to make her talk about her. We are very fortunate to have our own state Driver of the Year, Donna Doak.
I didn't think he'd make me cry again. But he does. I work for a great school district. That's all I can say. You guys have given me opportunities to grow. And I love working here. I love my kids. They're not just my parents' kids, they're my kids. And I love my job.
So what's your route?
My route? It changes from year to year. It can change from day to minute. You go here and pick this one up, oh, by the way, we have this one and we need you to do this, too. So I know Springfield very well. I usually drive-- well, I could list you a whole name of schools that I've done, but Carver, Delaware, Early Childhood, Shining Stars.
Okay, excellent.
Any board members have anything? Andy?
Well, I'd just like to offer my congratulations, but to reiterate that, you know, and I've said this before at the board table, but the school bus drivers are the people that see the kids first thing in the morning and the ones that see them, they're the last ones to see them in the afternoon. And you all have a really important part to play in the whole education process. And I think as board members and as administration, you know, we need to keep that in the back of our minds that everybody across the system has a real important part to play in the education of our kids and it's important that you do that. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. And I remember as a mother putting a four-year-old on the Early Childhood bus and then getting in my station wagon at the time and following that bus to Cowden. And I think that, and I know that you and your drivers were much, are much safer drivers and much more attentive than the rest of us on the road. And I mean, to be out on the road and to have that kind of responsibility for children each and every day is, in this community, is, like Andy was saying, one of the most important jobs that we have in the district. So thank you and thank you for representing us at the state level so well.
Thank you. One of the things that I have done, and this is, makes me feel really old, is I have went to houses unexpectedly, picking up the kids of my former students.
Oh, wow.
You know, and they bring them out to the bus and they say, oh, it's Donna. Okay. We're okay.
Yeah.
And that makes me feel good.
Well, that's great. Well, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a great year.
Thank you.
Best in the state, that's a very impressive, very impressive title. We're going to continue in the strategic discussion.
Mrs. Callen, those are other, are you guys drivers as well? Are they family?
No, just most of, they're all my staff.
Oh, okay.
Supervisors, driver supervisors, maintenance staff, trainers.
Okay.
Most of them, the rest of them are actually all on at orientation right now. So we've got tables set up at schools.
Yeah, I noticed that out at Westport. Thank you all for all that you do, too. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ritter. But continuing on from our very good discussion at our retreat almost a month ago, we're going to try to finalize some collective commitments, our mission and our vision with the help of Mrs. Moore, who facilitated that retreat for us. And I'm just going to turn it over to you, Mrs. Moore.
Thank you.
And then you'll let us know how we can engage.
I'll do that, thank you. And appreciate the time again with the Board and your hard work from before as I try to get technology to cooperate with me. And so what you have at your seats is a copy of the work product with a brief header that explains the significance of each of the agreed-upon component pieces that we worked on at the retreat. We have the mission statement, which defines the organization's purpose, and you have that draft of your thinking at that time. The same is true with the vision and the collective commitments. And so I present that to you for your approval and adoption. The piece of paper behind that is a takeaway piece on the goal work that you did. And so what you've got in front of you, highlighted in yellow, are the input pieces for the goals that you suggested for your collective group and a couple of questions that I had regarding those. You'll see above the table, two of the goals really, I think, are a part of just the functioning of the Board and the way that you naturally work. And so I've suggested that that would just be a piece of the work that you would regularly do. Then below, in each of the categories, you'll see the number of times that each of those goal items was listed. So you kind of see a display of what you, as a collective group, wanted to work on. And in working with Mrs. Callen and Dr. Frederick, we thought that perhaps the best way to arrive at a decision relative to the goals would be for you to priority rank individually those areas for goal work by ranking a one as your lowest priority, a five as your highest priority, and then providing that with, to Mrs. Luton, who would then tabulate those. So what we would have at the end of the meeting tonight would be your thinking about those priority areas for the goals. So by the end of this month, you'll have your mission, vision, collective commitments, and a decision about your goals to move into September and to move into your OSR as a Board. What questions may I answer?
I have a question. So in terms of under Common Focus advocacy, innovation, and look at data and results, and that says priority one through five, there's only four categories.
Right. We're looking at the four major categories because I think as you flex out what those goals are, the material below those headers would give you some really rich goals to work at.
Okay, so one doesn't, I guess if there's four categories, you don't, do you want us to rank them or do you want us--
I want you to put what--
--like each of it on a spectrum.
I want each of you individually to put, relative to each one, what is the priority for you. So when you look at the first one, I think the first one's advocacy.
A Common Focus.
Is that a number, where, okay, is it a one or a five? Where is it, one, two, three, four, five? And if everybody ranks those, what we'll do is tabulate those and then we'll see a rank order of what those priorities are across the Board.
Okay.
It won't pigeonhole anybody and it won't limit.
Right. And then that will come back to us at our August meeting?
That will come back to you, yes.
Okay. And will there be then some discussion just--
Then there'll be some discussion led by QIA in terms of what that, how that might manifest in your OSR.
That's right. We're still tying that to our systems review. Okay. I know.
We're not going to let you off the hook for that.
No, and we don't want to and nor should we be.
It's a valuable part of your Board work.
Any other questions about that? Do people want a few minutes now or is that something you could tend to during the meeting? Tend to during the meeting as I'm looking? Okay, all right. Thank you so much again, Mrs. Moore, for being our facilitator that evening and getting us to this point. Everybody feel comfortable with where we settled on the mission statement, vision statement, and our collective commitments? I think we struggled with that that night, so. For those of us who aren't process people, that was--
Laboring.
And I'm in that, I'm in that category, so, great. Okay, thank you so much. Mrs. Luton, are there any public comments on agenda items? All right. We'll move on to information. Dr. Nope, not there. Action items for vote, the resolution on House Bill 253. Dr. Ritter?
Yes, in front of you on board docs is the resolution. You've had an opportunity to look at that. I'd like to see action tonight on that, if we could, please. And then eventually, we can go ahead and forward that to MSBA, and that would be part of their platform as far as supporting the veto of House Bill 253. Just to remind everybody, the Governor is going to be here in Meeting Room A next Thursday, or this Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday evening at, is it 6:30?
Yep.
6:30. And so if this is passed tonight, maybe we see an opportunity to give him the resolution at that time as well, so. Okay, so anyway, if there's any questions?
Any questions about this process?
Have we now spoken with all of the local representatives?
We still have two more to meet with, Eric Burlison and Sanio, what's his last name? Anderson.
And of those that initially voted for this bill, have any of them indicated to us that we talked to that they would consider?
Well, we have one that is walking the fence a little bit, that would be Lincoln Huff. Other than that, it's pretty, pretty much--
And I was in on one of those meetings and made the comment to the Senator that this is going to have a negative impact financially on our schools. And it struck me that either we've got too much money and so a negative impact isn't going to be that bad, or it's bad. And there was a recognition, yeah, this will be, this will be a cut, this will be a hit to Springfield Public Schools. And, you know, it just strikes me is, I don't understand the reasoning behind following Kansas. From all reports, Kansas is wishing they'd never taken this path, and we want to follow them right down that rabbit hole. My head's kind of spinning on this, but--
I've been to all but one, and I hope to go to the next, too. It's clear that the argument is not Kansas anymore. The argument is, as you see in the television ads, state government hasn't modified, reduced taxes in a hundred years, and it's time. So we're not doing the Kansas argument anymore. And the other is that cutting taxes means growth. And then the one that follows that is, we have to vote with the caucus or we lose. We have a primary challenge. And that's, and those are the arguments, it's not about Kansas anymore.
Well, and I think, I think I've been seeing, I know I'm on a news feed from Missouri School Boards Association, and every day that there's another article in there about another district that has passed some sort of resolution like this. So I, you know, I hope that momentum and just the sheer number of people from around the state that are pointing to just the devastating results of something like this, it should be enough to spur our local legislators to change their vote. It should.
Has the Springfield Area Chamber of Commerce taken an official position on this?
I don't think they're going to until the 19th. That Monday is when they meet, yeah.
And are we in discussions?
I haven't.
They have a government committee.
Jeff Schrag.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody, if that committee's made a recommendation yet.
We tried to get in and they wouldn't let us into the meeting.
They wouldn't let us.
Because we're not a committee.
Because, you know, that's a close partner with this district and, maybe they're seeing different data than we're seeing, but I don't see any good that comes out of this bill and I'd be surprised if they did. And I'd certainly hope that they would take the, maybe unpopular position and join us in supporting the Governor's veto.
They have one of three ways to go, support the veto, support the override, or not do anything.
And Norm had some luck with asking if they'd just delay it for a year to give it some time to look at Kansas.
Seem to be some support.
But again, Kansas isn't the, that was the initial issue, it's not the issue anymore.
Right.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
For acceptance of the resolution.
Is there a second?
I second.
Maybe we can all have a collective second. It's been moved by Dr. Prater and seconded by--
Oh, give it to Andy.
Okay, Mrs. Bush, that the Board of Education adopts the attached resolution and authorizes Chris Callen, President of the Board of Education, to indicate the Board's support of the Missouri General Assembly's to sustain the veto of House Bill 253. It's too bad that Mr. Lee isn't here tonight, so it could be, I mean, I know what his vote would be, so he's worked tireless hours with MSBA on this.
And I--
Go ahead, Dr. Ritter.
I do think some of the work we're seeing and some of the meetings we're having are probably partially why the Speaker said he's not going to bring this up.
Yeah.
So, reality of--
And then the yo-yo of that commitment, I apparently have been, well, and I, I do think, I've been working with Mrs. Bloodsoe to get an op-ed piece written from our Board's perspective to be in our local paper, too. So hopefully, maybe by the end of the week or beginning of next week, that will-- All right, moving on to action items for separate consideration, just a reminder that these will just be reviewed tonight and then voted on in two weeks. Dr. Ritter, strategic plan?
Well, we had a chance to just briefly discuss it, but we've been looking at this for several months now. And so, any questions? What you're going to be approving on the 20th is the actual goals themselves and indicators. Okay? And that'll be the Board level. We had a conversation today, by the way, with Jill and Mrs. Moore to talk about the alignment of the goals with the OSRs. And we're going to come back, come to you, is that on the 20th?
Yes.
I think it is. I think on the 20th, we're going to review the OSRs and align, show you how it aligns and works, so.
Any questions about this? This has been to us and reviewed several times. I'd like to thank the staff and the community for all the work that's gone into getting this to the point where it can be voted on by the Board. It's been something, I think SP5, SPS5 has been something that's really helped me personally as a Board and I think has helped our focus, too, here, so look forward to moving ahead. And the next item, 7.02, Mr. Chotis.
Thank you. Proposed Board Policy DO, Acquisition of Real Property Fills a Gap in Our Board Policies. State Statute 177.073 Addresses Procurement of Sites by School Districts. And the first two paragraphs of the proposed policy are copied from the state statute. Additionally, during the recent state audit, it was pointed out that we should have a current appraisal on all real estate purchases, so we have included that as well in this proposed policy. And this is presented to the Board for first reading.
Any questions of Mr. Chotis?
Is this an MSBA policy?
It is not a standalone MSBA policy.
MSBA includes it in their purchasing language?
I guess the only question I would have, and maybe it's not relevant for policy, but I know we've gotten some backlash for a recent purchase that allegedly violated an agreement we'd made with the city. And so I don't know if something in policy needs to be there that prior to purchase that staff will review all relevant agreements, understandings, et cetera, with our local partners so that, so that we're not in a situation where we just forgot about an agreement we'd made. And again, I don't know that policy is the place to put it, but--
As practice procedures. That would be a practice procedure, which we're already doing. We already made that adjustment.
And that'll be put in there that agreements will be reviewed? Because we're going to have, at some point in time, Chotis will even retire. So we'll have--
Right.
Well, as people move in, so it's, you know, it's important to--
I think we saw the importance of having some historical perspective and approach to understanding some of those agreements that have been on the books for a while but just haven't been used. Okay?
Thank you.
Dr. Ritter, 7.03.
Well, I think this is a typical, this is the conflict of interest, financial disclosure statement. This is the one we're moving to this time of year so that it aligns with the approval prior to September. Yes, I need to check what Kathy Nozmore and I do on this. Anyway, so that's the main reason we're moving it. You did approve this in January, now we're going to get it lined up to where it's approved just before it needs to be sent into the state, and that's on September, so that's why we're doing it at this time.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Ritter.
It says revision, is the, really the revision is the timing of it, everything else is the same.
Right, it's exactly right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to 7.04. Dr. Ritter?
Mrs. Moore?
Got a little nervous, I was halfway up and thought maybe I need to sit back down. We're bringing before you the World Language Major Instructional Goals. And before I turn the floor over to Mrs. Schneider, I just wanted to kind of help you connect a lot of the jargon and educationese that you hear bandied about. So in Springfield Public Schools, we have major instructional goals because what we have tried to do is take the Missouri learning standards, which are Common Core-based, and make them personalized for our learning community and where we, as a community, want our students to go. So a lot of times I've talked to you about the Common Core curriculum and tried to help you understand some of the things you need to be concerned about and don't need to be concerned about. I just didn't want there to be any miscommunication that the major instructional goals are our way of framing curriculum for Springfield Public Schools. And I'm delighted to turn the floor over to Mrs. Nancy Schneider, who is our curriculum facilitator for World Language and Social Studies. And she's here with an excited team of teachers to talk about those major instructional goals in World Language.
Thank you. You have before you major instructional goals for world languages, which reflect three major changes to our program. The first change is we've changed our name. Prior to this, we were foreign language, and we believe world language better reflects the nature of our program. As we adopted American Sign Language, it really doesn't make sense to call ourselves foreign language anymore. The second change is Level 6 courses have now been refocused as advanced placement courses. So now students in our schools will be able to take advanced placement French, Japanese, or Spanish. And this is an exciting option for high schools that want to expand AP offerings at their school. The third major change is we have articulated K5 major instructional goals, which will really help support our three elementary language programs at Boyd Field and Roundtree. I am delighted to come before you today and introduce some key people who played a part in this process. Could I have you stand? Lynn Schick is the French teacher at Roundtree Elementary. Julie West is the department chairperson and French teacher at Parkview High School. LaShay Akis department chairperson and Spanish teacher at Glendale High School. And Rebecca Pomperine is the Latin teacher at Glendale High School. It's now my pleasure to introduce Alma Pedinger, my Curriculum Development Council chairperson, formerly Spanish teacher at Glendale High School.
I would like to thank you for this opportunity to present the newly revised major instructional goals for world languages. These goals were written by teachers who are passionate and enthusiastic about teaching world languages to our students. Teachers who believe that language education not only contributes to a student's career and college readiness, but also helps develop the individual as a language learner with a much broader and deeper view of the world. Teachers who believe that language and communication are at the heart of the human experience and are committed to educating students who are linguistically and culturally prepared and to succeed in a global society. These goals were written with the clear purpose of achieving the highest level of proficiency possible at each level. They are aligned to national and state standards, which are communication, cultures, connections, comparisons, and communities. They are also aligned to Common Core standards for literacy, as studying a foreign language helps students develop a broader vocabulary and acquire a deeper understanding of grammatical structures through reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And last, but certainly not least, our new goals for world languages are tightly connected to our SPS learning model, as they state clear goals and success criteria based on a rigorous curriculum designed to promote communication and critical thinking. Thank you very much.
What questions do you have for us today?
It was amazing to read all the major instructional goals for these, especially the elementary, but, and looking at some of the offerings that we have for our students, specifically the higher level, Japanese and French and Spanish, how are those offered at our, so are they offered at all those levels, at all high schools? Or do we have some high schools that offer the highest level? And how do students take advantage of that, that maybe you're going to a high school that they don't offer that? So that's kind of my question.
Each individual high school determines its own program of studies, and we find that Japanese, for example, is offered at Kickapoo High School, while Latin is offered at Glendale High School. The determination of which language is to offer is a site-based decision, and students are free to move to school should they desire. Though I contacted the counselors and assistant principals at our five high schools and was not given any indication that that's the compelling reason for a student to transfer. However, with our new project in partnership with Mercy, there probably will be increased interest in Latin if we have a number of students who have a very medical focus in their, in their program, because Latin is the language of science.
Well, can a student potentially, if they go to Kickapoo or they go to Parkview, can they, is there driving time for them to go to the other school by the end of the day and take that Japanese higher-level course? Is that a possibility?
It would, it would mean a change in the way that we structure the courses and when they're offered. Currently, that's not part of our program, though I know that in the future, we're looking at possibly some e-learning opportunities.
Okay. I was going to say, it seems to me that it's these kind of classes that are just, you know, perfect for developing that, you know, I guess it wouldn't be real distance learning, but, you know, the online or having an instructor at one site and having students be able to sit at a computer at another, I think that would be great, yeah.
Any consideration about adding Chinese to the curriculum?
We have looked at adding Chinese. There are a couple factors we'd be looking at. One is the health of our current programs. If adding Chinese might siphon away students from our current language programs, another consideration is staffing. We can, we can receive grant monies for a few number of years, but oftentimes, after that evaporates, it's maintaining the program that's an issue. We have a very-- We have a very strong partnership with our Japanese program, our sister city in Isasaki, Japan, the Missouri State University Language Institute, who brings in, I think they brought in 200 Japanese middle school students this year for their intensive language program. So at this time, Japanese is one of our major, it is our only Asian language we offer.
Questions, Mr. Hasmer?
One of the questions, I guess, it seems to me that the goals, the K-5 goals, that there's more of an emphasis on actually speaking as opposed to kind of a rote memorization of, that's what red, how do you say red? That's how you say blue? Is that, am I reading into that correctly, that there's more of an emphasis in the K-5 on that in the MIGs?
I think at the lower grades, there's more of an emphasis on spoken communication because students are just learning to read. And although they're able to transfer those early reading skills into French or Spanish, there really is that emphasis on the culture, being accustomed to the nature of the language. And when we get into our upper-level courses, we really, in middle and high school, we do expect the students to do a lot more reading and writing in their language classes.
And then my, the comment, I guess, and I've always kind of had this thought about languages, and is that it seems we put a lot of emphasis in the high school level languages or college and not kindergarten, where kids are big sponges and language acquisition comes very easy. And that if we could kind of swish that around, that perhaps we'd have better luck with, you know, what is learned. The other thought I had, that I've thrown out multiple times, but to see if it sticks, language immersion schools. Are we tossing that around in somebody's head? Because I know St. Louis, Kansas City, I've seen results showing, you know, you learn a second language and you're fluent in a second language. First of all, the third, fourth, and fifth language comes much easier after you have a second language. And lots of different, lots of different courses become easier because of the way your brain is working trying to speak a different language. So I wonder if that's something that's being kicked around somewhere and will be thought about, considered. I'd love to see it.
We have an entire faculty of foreign language teachers who would love to see that as well. It's a matter of finding the right program. Currently, our International Baccalaureate Program does offer a K-12 articulation of language. I spoke with the principal at Pipkin today. Over a third of his students come for the, to Pipkin for the IB program, of which language is an integral part. And he says he has a waiting list. So there is definitely a demand for foreign language learning in this city and in this district.
And I'll throw one more thing out. This is, again, a little bit aside, but I took the requisite Spanish in college, the three semesters, 'cause I had to. Got good grades. And at the end of those three semesters, spoke very little Spanish. Could ask where the beer was and where the bathroom was. I then went to the Peace Corps in 1996, and they had an immersion language. In three months, we learned Romanian. And in three months of being, having Romanian spoken to me from the first minute I got to the class to the end, I learned 100 times more Romanian in three months than I'd learned in three semesters at the University of Missouri. And it was that immersion, it was that forced focus and requirement for me to push my brain. But again, I was learning as an adult, which is 10 times harder than learning as a five-year-old or a six-year-old. So, you know, if we're really serious about language acquisition, I'd like for us to be serious about it. But that's my soapbox, so I'll get off.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments? I mean, it seems like, you know, discussions with our choice and innovation team would be an appropriate place for some of those discussions to start. I just have a question about the AP. I'm really glad that we're aligning those higher-level courses to advanced placement. Do we have teachers that are AP-prepared? Will they have to go through additional training for that?
We have teachers who next summer will attend AP-training, and they currently are teaching dual enrollment classes through MSU, so they will be certifiable to teach AP classes.
All right. Thank you, and thank you to the people out in the audience.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Ann Wallenmeyer, and I work with Science Curriculum, and I'm very excited-
Are we ready for Ann?
Oh, are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, good. I'm excited to speak with you about genetics this evening. First of all, I would like to recognize two of my committee members that have come tonight that have helped put together the resource list for the genetics. And if they would stand, Stephanie Blake, department chair at Parkview High School, and Steve Yonkey, teacher at Glendale High School. We did have representation on our, oh, go ahead and give my hand. We did have representation on our committee from all five high schools. Genetics is one of the courses that I'm excited about. Over the last two years, we have been experimenting, we're scientists, we've been experimenting with some personalization of student learning through our science research and design classes. And so we have teachers who are passionate and recognize student interest, and they have started some classes like science research and design forensics, science research and design meteorology. And Steve started science research and design genetics. Science research and design is a course that focuses on the process of science, and then the content can become personalized for student interest and/or teacher passion. So genetics has risen to become a course that is content and process together. And as you see before you, the equipment list and the textbook of resources, and then the training that will go into the teachers learning how to do gel electrophoresis. So if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them now.
Are there any questions? Oh, yeah, well, we know Dr. Frederick. This is her, this is her background.
First, I wanted just to commend you, and I noticed it on your parent list, your parent committee. You have, it's about 50% parent involvement as teacher involvement. And I know that you have on your committee some of the top science teachers in the state. I've worked with them many times, and especially this summer, I worked on a National Science Foundation grant with several of the teachers on your committee. But can you tell us just a little bit how, you know, how you went about getting so many parents to be involved on that committee? Because it's tough. That's a challenge to get parents to be involved in committees because it's so time-consuming and sometimes odd times of the day. But can you speak to that a little?
I think the biggest success that we had with getting parents involved was through relationships that teachers had with those parents, and that's how they brought them forward and then walked through the resources with them and were able to kind of give them an overview of it and let them look at those. And we are going to kind of change our system for doing that. So I have a slide to show you that. Rather than trying to, oops, yep, nope, there we go. Rather than trying to come up with different parents to serve on the committees, and many of these committees are very time-consuming and very complex, we are gonna go through a system where we have the resources and then present it to the parent advisory council in order to have their input on the resources to see if there's any unintended consequences or concerns that might happen. So that's gonna be our process now for our future adoptions.
You know, they're a pretty radical group.
Yeah. So it's a good testing ground.
Any other input or questions? Go ahead, sorry.
On looking at your genetics equipment list, I was, again, so very impressed by the list of equipment that you'll be purchasing. I understand you have some that's already in plus, you know, some of the buildings have some of this that they've purchased on their own with their supplies. But by looking at this, it appears to me that any of our students that complete this class should be able to walk into any laboratory and do some basic genetic study. Is that-
That is very accurate. It's very comparable to the lab work that would be done in a genetics laboratory or in a college classroom. The biotechnology involved has the kiddos doing gel electrophoresis, they're extracting their own DNA, they are amplifying the DNA, and then they're analyzing with gels to see what genes they have. Now, of course, we have taken out the medical emphasis so that they're not looking at medical sensitive issues. And then they're sequencing the mitochondrial DNA, which comes from the mother. And I actually was there the day they did it, so I got to have mine done. And my maternal family comes from England. That is where my mitochondrial DNA originates, which my great-great-grandmother came from Yorkshire, England. So it's very accurate.
Confirmed, right there.
Yes.
Anything else? Mrs. Bush?
These courses will be taught-
This next year, they'll be taught-
At all high schools?
Next year, they are being offered at Kickapoo and Glendale. Hillcrest did do, tried to do a soft rollout with their selection of studies, but they did not get enough numbers to make. This class can be offered at any high school, as long as when they do the selection of studies, it can be made. They get enough students in order for them to justify the teacher teaching the class.
And the equip-
Well, as we need more equipment, we'll purchase more equipment, yes.
But this is only for purchasing equipment at Kickapoo?
And Glendale. So-
Now, this will only be taught at Kickapoo and Glendale.
Right, because that's where the course is made for this coming school year. And then as high schools are added, we'll purchase more equipment.
Any other questions?
I should say thank you. This is really exciting.
It's amazing.
Thank you to the teachers, too. All right. Thank you.
You guys will behave, right? I didn't think so.
Um, 7.06, technology bond project.
Mr. Green, please.
Madam President, members of the board, I'm honored to be able to stand before you and talk about the first bond project of the 2013 bond that was passed by the community. We are very excited about the opportunity to start working on our network infrastructure. And so before you, you have an action item that breaks down the details of the processes that we went through to get that item put together. And I just wanted to recognize a few of my staff that was involved in the process of developing the RFP that we worked on in April. We started that process a little bit, you know, hopeful of the bond passing, and then finalized that after the bond had passed. So we were a little bit ahead of the schedule when we pulled all that together. And I would like to recognize these folks sitting right here. I've got some other folks that couldn't make it tonight. Greg Askew?
Stand up.
Pat Jodelle? And Dustin Coy. Dustin is new to the district. He is our new person that took over for Dwayne Rockefeller, who retired from our department. It's the second retiree I've had in my department since I've been here almost nine years. So we miss Dwayne, but he was one of the folks that was involved. We also had Bruce Douglas, who works in our DBA area and works in our department. Caleb Laskley, who also works in our network. And I'm trying to think if I missed anybody. Steve Kaufman, who's our new help desk manager. So all those folks were involved, as well as myself. We had help from OTC and MSU, trying to find some outside sources and folks to review the RFPs. We put together two separate rubrics for that. The first rubric was involved in breaking down several questions. There was 84 questions involved, very detailed, very technical. In those questions, they broke down the core, which is what we call the data center here, what upgrades have to happen to make that process flow better for all the schools. Also, the IDS and MDS, which are all the data center rooms that are in all the schools and all the equipment that goes in there. Also, it was broken into the wireless access points that need to be put in every classroom. And then also looking at not just that, but the network management, as well as what's involved in supporting that product. So that was part of that first rubric, going through that process, evaluating all those vendors. We had nine vendors that applied. Some, one vendor, we had one vendor that had two RFPs submissions from HP and two from Cisco. So we had a total of four from the same person, but they submitted different approaches. We were excited about those, how they came in from a cost factor. We also asked them to put together a project plan. We put them on a timeline of 18 to 24 months for completion from the time of kickoff. So we're really hopeful that we can make that project follow that timeline, because our staff's excited. I don't walk through a school, went to Westport. You see all the excitement there. You really want that to be the premier places that all our kids can have in every school. And so wireless access is the real key thing and having the bandwidth to support it. You know, I think the biggest thing is, is when we put the RFP together, we struggled with how we wanted to do that. We looked at the core part of the data center. We looked at the buildings, as each is a facility. And then we looked at the cabling functions that had to be done. Every building had to be, has to be cabled to make all this stuff work. So we asked for those bids to be included with a turnkey solution, so that we have one vendor to deal with for the whole project. We don't have people pointing fingers at each other. We've dealt with that in the past. So that's why you see a project lead that's from each of those vendors' bids. And then they had to also secure bid bonds. So we also required bid bonds, which was part of what we've learned from Capital Construction and getting into those things. So that was all with the help of Scott and some of the other folks from Capital Construction. We also had lots of help from transportation hauling all these folks around from building to building. We went to every building in the district, and we did that in four days. But by having them all on a school bus, I can tell them, count them off, drop them off for lunch at McDonald's or wherever it was healthy I could find, and they can have their choice or bring their own lunch. But they had 30 minutes for lunch, and we went on to the next buildings. So we went through that process as quickly as possible. The second part of the evaluation was actually a classroom environment that we set up here at Craft. It was a closed environment in Room B, where we set up 40 iPads and 30 laptops. And the reason we picked the iPads is because we have iPad Ones in some of our schools, and those are the slowest and what we call the stickiest devices on a network. Once they attach to a wireless access point, they don't ever release it. They hold on to it. And that's part of why they take a lot of bandwidth, and that's why we have some issues with those. But we wanted those vendors to have what we see in classrooms and expect to see in classrooms. So we had two different types of devices. We went with the iPad One and brand-new technology with Netbooks. So we had two different spans. We brought those devices on 10 at a time in a mixed mode and streamed video to them directly. So they were all running video, so we could watch their performance. We evaluated those vendors based on that performance, and that's the data that you have in the final results. So the vendor that we had, the top performing vendor was JMA out of Kansas, the Kansas City area. We feel like it is the best choice for the district and has the ability to be flexible, has the ability for us to grow as a district, and has the future-proofing that we feel like we need for a district our size. Any questions that I might answer?
Any questions of Mr. Green, Mrs. Bush?
I just wondered about proximity of support. You comfortable with their being able-
They have a local support person. And the reason is, is because MSU's using the same product.
Okay.
Mr. Hasmer?
Well, not surprisingly, but I was totally confused by these numbers, so. But it's an IT thing, so I'll just assume that's the reason.
Well, you've been down this road with me before, and we did board docs.
That's true. Okay. Let me see if I understand-
Sure.
-the way this was done. There was initially nine vendors that submitted-
Yes, sir.
-proposals. That of those, there was then evaluation criteria or rubric that had these five 20% things, and that was to bring the nine down to-
Top five.
Top five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's all defined under Section 5. Those were the percentages used, which was the infrastructure requirements. In other words, how did they define they were going to put together the infrastructure, what kind of support they were gonna provide as far as how that equipment, the design of that equipment, whether it was equipment that has been out on the market for a long period of time and probably could go to end of life, maybe by December or January or February of next year. Also, looked at the financial impact, looked at the ability to implement the solution. In other words, did they have the staffing? Have they done it before? Have they done it in school districts? And then also their experience and qualifications, and whether or not they can meet the bonding.
Okay. I guess maybe it'd just be simpler for me, because then I look at Attachment C1, and we go down and we have the bid costs, the alternate bid costs, and we see the JMA Junipers at 7.3 million.
Yes.
And we have scores from evaluations- And we have scores from evaluations at 89.
Right.
And we see scores from evaluations of the low bid of 96.
Right.
And I guess my simple question would be, we have a $1.2 million difference. Tell me why JMA Juniper is a better choice for the district than ISG HP?
I go to Attachment D. And in Attachment D, that was the final test. They had to do the actual classroom test, when the vendors were put to the test of actually performing in a classroom environment. And we tested them for that period of time, and all vendors went through that test. This is the scoring that came out of that test. So, yes, they may have had the best score based on their written documentation they gave in the rubric for the first part, but when we actually put them to the real test of how's it going to perform in the classroom, that's the final piece. So the top five went through the final piece.
So that's that third line down wireless performance test results?
Yes.
And that was the big driver there? And that was the?
That is the big driver, as well as the product features. In other words, some of the vendors brought products that had been on the market at least two to three years. Some vendors also brought products that had just come out and would be probably available for at least two to three years.
And when we put this on our, on the bond?
Yes.
You budgeted this part of the IT upgrade. What did you budget this part?
We did 11.4. I think that was the number we went with. And that was based on our calculations of what we could estimate cost would be, as well as the risk factors of 12 to 15% of incorrect valuation.
So 11.4?
11.4.
So $4 million more than what?
So the bids came in lower than what we expected. And then you got to add in a risk factor of things that the wiring might end up finding that we, because of our buildings, as well as additional access points that we might run into that we might decide we need in an alternative building.
Do any other board members have questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very well done. Thank you.
And then 7.07, adoption of local plan for compliance with regulations.
Good evening. We've got the for you in action item to approve our local model compliance plan under IDEA. This used to be a requirement that we did annually. In 2008, they decided instead of doing it annually, they would do it when there were revisions to the model compliance plan. And we used to have to do it in the summer before we could open our budget. They no longer tie it to the budget. So this year, they've made some minor revisions to the local model compliance plan. We always adopt DESI's plan that matches the standards and indicators manual. So we need to have the board approve the local model compliance plan. As part of that, there's three areas where districts have to make some selections. Those have to do with early childhood identification. We currently use young child with developmental delay or any school-age categorical disability area. And we would like to continue doing that. And so that is checked in our model compliance plan. The other piece is when those students transition to kindergarten, you have the option to allow them to go to kindergarten with young child developmental delay and reevaluate them before first grade. Or you can say that everybody has to have a categorical. And we allow them to go either as a young child with developmental delay or with a categorical, which is our current practice as well. The other piece is anytime we have instructional materials adopted, if we have a student who's blind or visually impaired, that we use the National Center for Instruction to help with those modifications. And so those are the three areas that we have differentiated for Springfield Public Schools. Questions?
Questions on this issue? So no change from previous practice is what you said?
No change from previous practice.
And adopting DESI's recommendations?
And its wording changes. The only major change, we were required by federal law to comply with some Medicaid provisions last March. And so they've updated the standards and indicators to match what we've already complied with. So it was the most major revision. So we would like to request that you approve the local model compliance plan.
And we'll do that in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
The routine action items were presented for your review. We'll go to Section 9, public comment to address non-agenda items. Mrs. Luton, any speakers? Okay. We'll go to comments from the board, legislative update. We've pretty much covered that with 253. Is there anything else out there?
I think there's going to be a special session. I'm not quite sure when. Well, we know there's going to be a special session. I'm not sure, quite sure what their agenda's going to be. There might be the issue related to transfers responding to the, we discussed earlier, responding to what's happening in St. Louis from the Supreme Court decision. We'll see what happens there. But other than that, it's all going to be tied to, I think, House Bill 253. So.
Anything under future issues?
Could we have Scott kind of tell us at some other meeting what, I know technology was our first part of the bond issue, kind of what, how we're going to phase in the other?
Like a timeline?
The timeline's kind of on the other things. When we've got three years, I know technology was first because it's going to take three years probably to?
He says in the future.
Do we have a timeline?
We're putting that together right now. The, through the chamber, the Springfield Contractors Association just recently did a survey as well to look at the construction schedule of all that'll be taking place in the city of Springfield during this next year. So that will impact the potential of when we look at bidding different projects. Part of the other thing, too, is our summer windows are real critical times to get pieces of the work done that we can't do when students are in the facilities. So those are all some of those factors that we're working with all the architects now putting together. But when I bring the next quarterly report forward to the board, that would be the October report, I hope to have the timelines all laid out for you.
Is that the timing okay on that, Mr. Renner, for you?
We are, we are under the tight timeline related to the Boys and Girls Club and Sherwood. So that's part, that's a, we're waiting on Boys and Girls Club on that one, so.
Okay, yeah, we're, I think we're starting to get asked in the community about different timings. Anything else under future issues? I have something to. Okay, I do have kind of a bittersweet announcement to make. Last week, Dr. Ritter submitted a letter to the board that I'd like to read. Says, "Dear Chris, with excitement and anticipation, I'm asking the school board to release me from my contract obligation for the 2014-2015 school year. Nadine and I have learned from our work in Springfield and the area, and the area has become home to us. Springfield Public Schools is ready to move to another level of exciting challenges to educate the Springfield children. I would like to thank you for your support of Nadine and me. Springfield Public Schools has a wonderful staff. The school board is outstanding. The teachers are awesome, and the leadership is second to no other district in Missouri. I will work every day to strengthen our teamwork for children over this next school year. I would like to express our appreciation to the Springfield community and their support of Nadine and me while we have served in this community in both education and healthcare. Nadine and I are ready to move into a new phase of our life. Our experiences in Springfield have served us well. We hope in a small way, we have helped to make Springfield a better place for its children. Thank you. Sincerely, Norm Ritter, Superintendent." So this announcement went out to internally this afternoon. We wanted our staff to be aware of it. This, we have an exciting school year ahead. And Dr. Ritter has assured me that, you know, his energy is here and his, and his intellect is here. And so we will, he's assured me of that. Yeah, but, you know, I think sometimes when there's announcement of a transition, people start to think that that will happen immediately. But he has assured me that he will be guiding our leadership team over the next year. With that, I believe that in two weeks, on the agenda, we'll have a public discussion from the board perspective of how we want to handle the search. And I do, there has been, in anticipation of this, because of other things that have happened this summer with Dr. Ritter's employment situation, we have initiated, and we could do this, I checked without, like, official board approval, that an RFP is being developed to go out to potential search firms. We wouldn't necessarily have to choose that that's the option that we would take, but we just thought to really be sensitive to the timeframe that we would get that sent out, and that can be part of our discussion in two weeks. So, Dr. Ritter, thank you for the heads up.
Oh, sure.
You know, we've talked all along about the transparency of this process and this relationship. And I would just say that, yes, you have helped Springfield in a mighty way, not just the school district, but also the community. So thank you. And we'll have lots of work for you to do the year ahead, so.
All I got to say is I've had a blast. Hopefully, everybody else has had a blast as well. But anyway, it's been a lot of fun. So I think the children of Springfield have an awesome place to grow up, and I think this, the future's very, very bright. So it's going to be exciting to see where Springfield's going to be at five years from now.
Yeah, it is very exciting. And you've certainly helped position us well for that future, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's probably the biggest future issue we have to deal with. But I will say, I received word, and this would be under other. I received word maybe about a week or so ago that, from MSBA, that the Springfield Public School Board of Education has qualified. They've kind of changed their parameters for the Outstanding Board of Education, and they are going to give awards in each of the six areas of the vision project. And so last week, you were sent kind of the parameters of the different areas that we could consider applying for. And we are eligible in all categories but governance and policy because we've already been recognized in that category. So if anybody's had a chance to look at that criteria or has any input, I would welcome that. The tricky thing here is our application, which certainly isn't as long as it used to be, is due on August 21st, right, Mrs. Luton? Is that what it is? Yeah. And so I would be needing a couple board members to work with staff to help put, pull that documentation together, so.
And we just need to know what area you want us to go in, and we're ready to do it, so.
I would just, I mean, one of the things, I talked to Mr. Lee, knowing that he wouldn't be here. And one of the areas that I think stands out from a board's perspective, as well as a district's perspective, is the learning, teaching, and assessment area.
Oh, sure.
And I don't know if anybody else saw that, but certainly our OSRs, you know, and the board driving that, our choice and innovation programs, you know, our focus on individualized learning. That's kind of what stuck out to me. If there were other areas that stuck out to others, we could look at that, but.
Can we use that? We'll, we'll take it from here.
Yes.
We need to get on it.
Are there, are there board members who'd be interested in being a part of that process? I think if this is our award, that we should?
Do whatever needs to be.
Okay, Dr. Prater and Dr. Frederick, there you go. And Mr. Lee said he, he really needs to take a backseat because he'll be on the screening committee, so.
Things are different here.
I feel them all, come on, Jerry. But he, he definitely thought that was an area that stuck out to him as well. Anything under, anything else under other? I know we do have to go into executive session.
Real quick, Mr. Renner and I and Ms. Luton have been putting together policies, and we're ready to come to the board in September with Policy Area A and C.
Out of how many?
Out of, that'll be three out of 13.
Okay, that's not bad, that's good.
So I bow to the, before I'm, before I leave, we're going to have that all in place, so.
We're going to hold you to that, Dr. Ritter.
Anyway, so I appreciate Mr. Renner and his work with that. And so we, we will be coming to you. Study session for the first read for Policies A and C.
And thank you, Bruce, for doing that on our behalf. It's kind of tedious work. That's, usually that's kind of a rookie assignment. You don't get that as a veteran assignment. So we appreciate you taking that for us. Just a reminder to do your plus deltas as a way for us to kind of evaluate the work that we do together. And with that said, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Bush, seconded by Dr. Prater, that the board will conduct an executive session following this meeting to discuss audit findings in real estate matters as provided in Section 610.0212 and 17, RSMO. Do we need personnel on there, too?
Yeah, now.
Okay. Thank you.